Five is here.
I went for. You mean our management? For that one. I understand.
You probably want to be muted.
Yeah.
Want to welcome everybody to the October 20th, 2020 zoning board of appeals meeting. On we have one item of older business and then one new application and our minutes to go over. Matt, can you hear us?
Yes.
Is he muted? Matt, can you unmute yourself?
Oh, I believe I am.
If you click on.
Okay, I should be unmuted now.
Still no.
Can anybody hear?
I can hear them.
Not at this point.
I can hear them.
Okay, good.
But we can't hear them.
Matt, you're, we're still not hearing you.
Okay.
Do you have a volume?
I do, I'll, I'll turn it up here.
Probably our speakers.
And we can't hear them.
We can't hear any of them.
You can't hear me either?
Speaker or is it coming through your?
It'll come through my computer.
Wait, ask me.
What?
Jonathan, if you're with us.
What's singing? Oh, I don't know who there was speaking.
Yeah, we just can't hear them.
Okay, that should have done it.
Okay.
I don't really have time now, I'm about to start a zoning board meeting.
It should be on.
Oh, it's not tomorrow. Oh. Yeah, I know, okay.
These speakers.
Yes, I, I think you said the 28th, which is not tomorrow. Okay.
Yeah, they can hear us, we can't hear them.
Yeah, I can hear everyone so far just fine.
I stopped the music. I did.
So I'm just gonna try and restart it. Can you hear me now?
Can you hear us?
Somebody just talked.
I, I stopped the music again.
If you're talking over the speaker, would you please choose wifi and say disconnect?
What's speaking?
Do you hear us?
Over the Alexa speaker.
Yeah, we just can't hear them.
I don't know why you're hearing me there.
So part of it. The, the chess meeting isn't actually tomorrow, it's next.
Yeah, if somebody wanted to. We're not gonna be able to hear themselves.
They can type in. Nobody is on a cellphone on it.
It could be on a cellphone.
Not 100%.
Why don't you click on other sound setting?
Where is that?
My. Volume bar that you were just.
Mm-hmm.
Go down one.
Where the hell is? Where the hell is Michael Jackson?
Audio, just see what it's saying for speakers.
What is the property to play?
Okay, then you've got to make sure. See the even YouTube button. Click on that to unmute it. Okay, and then there should be a volume.
Nothing.
Yeah, see.
Yeah, speaker Samsung. It's a mic.
Yeah, that's what this is. So I wonder, but you, you wouldn't normally get the volume out of here, right?
No, it's on my computer.
Okay. So see, illicit devices is one of the, the computer itself.
Speakers.
Select playback device. Okay.
This is the first time we use that?
Yeah.
Hmm. Let's.
Matt, can you talk?
Sure, yeah, I, I can still hear everything, it's fine.
All right. Wow.
Uh-huh, I found it.
All right.
Sorry guys.
All right. Jonathan, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Wonderful, okay, so Arthur, good. Mr. Collins, you can hear us as well?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
I'm just asking Lynn, because I want to make sure she can hear us. Okay, perfect, she can hear, so we're good.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right, no problem. All right, so I'd already opened. At this point, what we like to do is have what we call an open forum. For any comments regarding the zoning board of items that are not on the agenda, because we'll have a public hearing. Comment part of that. So at this point, I am going to open the public forum. If anybody has anything they would like to contribute.
Lynn wanted to say that the zoning board agenda is not posted for October 20 meeting, thank you.
Other than that, if there are no comments for the open forum, we need to go ahead and close the open forum. And then we can proceed to. First item of business. And this, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Okay, you're up. And we want to review your application, and if I remember correctly, that you were intending to construct a 60 by 20 garage with a, like an overhang section? That would have made the footprint a 22 by 20?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then where you were intending to set it, it was going to be six feet from your east side property line?
Yes.
Okay, and then, and I guess what we determined, your lot is only 60 feet wide, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so where we're setting this structure, again, it's going to be 6 feet from your east side, and it's going to be 32 feet from your west side property line?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're looking on the east side for a variance of 34 feet, and then on the west side would be a variance of 8 feet?
Yes.
Does that make sense? We recall that's what we've come up with? I, I think we discussed also, your well is in the back?
Yeah. I, yes, would be behind where the garage would be built.
Okay. Now, is there any, the swimming pool that is indicated, is still going to remain in place?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So when you would initially purchase the property, it was only the 60 feet wide?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and if I understand, it's about 230 feet?
Yes.
Okay. Ed or Jonathan, are you guys following this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I guess somebody wanted to make a, open a public hearing for this particular application? Open public hearing in regards to the application regarding this construction and.
I can't tell what other producements we may have, are there any?
I don't know who this. No. Nobody's saying anything.
And so, it appearing that there not be anybody here. Don't you make a comment via the public hearing? I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing regarding this matter.
Are you asking for comment?
Yeah.
Well, we can't understand a word you're saying. I don't understand, we can't seem to correct the volume on this.
Okay.
Well, we are the neighbors on the east side.
Okay.
Lynn Latella, my wife, is the, is the property owner, and we have no problem with what the Collinses are, want to construct.
Okay.
They want to construct it.
Yes, okay, right, that would be what we're looking for as far as a public comment, thank you. So we'll enter that as.
What's your address?
Your address, please?
26. 2326 West Road. Pattersonville. 12137.
Yeah, but that's, that's probably, yeah.
Will I finish with the wall?
You might as well now.
Nelson.
All right.
Dan.
Hi.
All right, then I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we declare this variance application a type 2 action, and I'll read it accordingly. That area variance for this construction, type 2 action pursuant to final 6 NYC RR section 675C. And that no further action pursuant, seeker is required.
I'll second.
Okay, and I should have prefaced that.
Didn't we? I thought this was in the, in the record, is we did it last month.
It, it wasn't, I just looked, but it doesn't hurt that we can do it.
Okay.
Actually, you could make a motion then that we declare ourselves the lead agent.
All right, I will make such a motion, although I think we did this. All right, I will move that we declare ourselves lead agent for seeker purposes in this, in the Collins application.
We did a move.
7.
Done.
Hi.
Dan.
Nelson. I.
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 Now I'm going to go through the factors considered regarding this application, and the first being whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant could be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance.
No, they couldn't fit anything in this property.
Whether the requested variance is substantial. Yeah, just for the, the lot being as small as it is. Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Yes. And then if somebody would be so kind to make a motion for the granting of the two variances.
Sure, I, I'll make a motion to grant to Thomas Collins of 2344 West Road, SBL number 35.06-3-26. A side yard setback variance of 8 feet on the west side and 34 feet on the east side, on a pre-existing undersized lot to construct a 16 by 20 foot with 6 foot overhang, single-story detached garage. Per the findings of section 14.5.2B, provided a building permit be obtained within 6 months and all other aspects of the ordinance be followed.
We can make that note as well.
I'll second.
Are you sure you have the setbacks? As I remember, the 8 foot setbacks was on the east side, and the 30 foot, 30 whatever feet was on the west side.
No, it's, that's the amount of the variance, because it's going to be 6 feet from the east side.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so. Yes. 34 foot variance on the east side, and then it's only an 8 foot variance. You basically need 40 foot on either side.
Okay.
Right, because this is actually going to the east side of your property. Is that correct?
Well, it's the west side of my property.
Well, right, but.
Side of, of Tom's.
Tom's property is going to the east, right, so then you obviously live to the east of him.
We are to the east of him, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You need to affirm your.
Motion.
Motion.
All right, yes, sorry, couldn't hear Melissa, sorry.
All right.
Hi.
I can't tell what other producements we may have, are there any?
I don't know who this. No. Nobody's saying anything.
And so, it appearing that there not be anybody here. Don't you make a comment via the public hearing? I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing regarding this matter.
Nelson.
I.
I.
Are you asking for comment?
Yeah.
Well, we can't understand a word you're saying. I don't understand, we can't seem to correct the volume on this.
Okay.
Well, we are the neighbors on the east side.
Okay.
Lynn Latella, my wife, is the, is the property owner, and we have no problem with what the Collinses are, want to construct.
Okay.
They want to construct it.
Yes, okay, right, that would be what we're looking for as far as a public comment, thank you. So we'll enter that as.
What's your address?
Your address, please?
26. 2326 West Road. Pattersonville. 12137.
Yeah, but that's, that's probably, yeah.
Will I finish with the wall?
You might as well now.
Nelson.
All right.
Dan.
Hi.
All right, then I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we declare this variance application a type 2 action, and I'll read it accordingly. That area variance for this construction, type 2 action pursuant to final 6 NYC RR section 675C. And that no further action pursuant, seeker is required.
I'll second.
Okay, and I should have prefaced that.
Didn't we? I thought this was in the, in the record, is we did it last month.
It, it wasn't, I just looked, but it doesn't hurt that we can do it.
Okay.
Actually, you could make a motion then that we declare ourselves the lead agent.
All right, I will make such a motion, although I think we did this. All right, I will move that we declare ourselves lead agent for seeker purposes in this, in the Collins application.
We did a move.
7.
Hi.
Dan. Nelson.
I.
I.
Now I'm going to go through the factors considered regarding this application, and the first being whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant could be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance.
No, they couldn't fit anything in this property.
Whether the requested variance is substantial. Yeah, just for the, the lot being as small as it is. Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Yes. Right. And then if somebody would be so kind to make a motion for the granting of the two variances.
Sure, I, I'll make a motion to grant to Thomas Collins of 2344 West Road, SBL number 35.06-3-26. A side yard setback variance of 8 feet on the west side and 34 feet on the east side, on a pre-existing undersized lot to construct a 16 by 20 foot with 6 foot overhang, single-story detached garage. Per the findings of section 14.5.2B, provided a building permit be obtained within 6 months and all other aspects of the ordinance be followed.
We can make that note as well.
I'll second.
Matt.
Are you sure you have the setbacks? As I remember, the 8 foot setbacks was on the east side, and the 30 foot, 30 whatever feet was on the west side.
No, it's, that's the amount of the variance, because it's going to be 6 feet from the east side.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so. Yes. 34 foot variance on the east side, and then it's only an 8 foot variance. You basically need 40 foot on either side.
Okay.
Right, because this is actually going to the east side of your property. Is that correct?
Well, it's the west side of my property.
Well, right, but.
Side of, of Tom's.
Tom's property is going to the east, right, so then you obviously live to the east of him.
We are to the east of him, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You need to affirm your.
Motion.
Motion. All right, yes, sorry, couldn't hear Melissa, sorry.
All right.
Hi. Hi.
Okay, so it's been approved. Okay, so it's been approved. So then, Mr. Collins, you just need to see Dale so that you could proceed.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Okay, thank you.
Nelson, Melissa is a little hard to hear. I don't know how close you are to a microphone.
Yeah.
I hear the rest of you fine. It's just Melissa.
Yeah, well, again, she may be to the backside of this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's also something she's projecting on our computer. Something about a public hearing for Michael Drexel.
Yeah, it's just a different slide from.
Yeah.
Well, I think originally that what was shown was the planning board. But.
Oh, that's what. Looks like. Yeah.
Yeah.
What it looks like.
Right. It, it, but initially the, what was shown was the planning board heading. But, but at this point, it's. Yes.
Sorry.
That's alright.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is Mr. Cohen connected with us?
I don't see him.
Henry Cohen? Either he or somebody wrote this down. Yeah, but. Well. Well, we've got a couple minutes, so. Yeah, that was the application. Had you spoken to him recently? Yeah, you know what? Yeah, you want? Oh, yeah. To make better use of time, we could review our meeting minutes from last meeting. There were actually. One correction I noted. The zoning. Ordinance regarding this setback for Mr. Collins. It should be seven, one, six, two. Which is the side yard because the three is for a corner lot. Well, that needs to be corrected. And the only other thing you said seeker should be S E Q R. Just to be. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well. Not for this today here. Alright, also, yeah, and there's another. Reference to, it should be seven, one, six, two, as opposed to the three. Oh, you're right. We did do that last time and I didn't. I looked at it and didn't see it. Anyway. Are there any other corrections you guys are seeing? We just got over the minutes. The only thing we noted is that the. Zoning ordinance reference, it should be a seven, one, six, two instead of the three. It's a three square corner lot. This is an outright side yard setback. For Collins, it should be a two. And seeker. Yeah, you don't need to use, just S E Q R. I mean, it's a small thing, but. Yeah. I'm not seeing anything. If somebody wanted to make a motion to accept the minute says.
I want a motion to accept the minute as written with the corrections as noted.
Thank you.
Dan. Dan. Nelson.
Hi.
Pat. Matt.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Approved. I called three times and I emailed twice.
So we'll just hold back for the time being. Only other thing I. I just wanted to. The sexual harassment training, everybody was able to accomplish that? Alright, well, you need just to let Carney know because again, she's gonna be held responsible for it. The sexual harassment training, you guys were made aware of that? Jonathan?
No, but I haven't checked my town email lately, so.
Okay.
Presumably it's there.
And we, if you're still getting that through the state, you might be able to. You know, use that training if they gave it to you recently in lieu of, I think that's what you had done, correct?
Right, I'm sure I have to go through an annual.
Alright.
Version for the state.
Alright, well, again, it just involves there about two twenty-minute. Basically YouTube, you know, it just.
Okay.
I'm sure you've seen it before.
Yeah. And are there YouTube's for the. The annual training or?
Well, I'm gonna get.
Go down and see.
Yeah, you're, you're getting ahead of me. Alright.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Matt? Did you get the, you got the information about the sexual harassment training?
Um, I, I have not. I'm in the process of getting in touch with the right person to get my town email set up, so.
Okay. When I did send some, my personal email because knowing that neither everybody is connected with the town email yet. So I'm gonna send this out again. The other thing is I have some. Requirements for us to accomplish our annual training as well. So. Melissa, as far as the town email. They need to be given an email with a password.
Yeah.
And then you access the email outlook.com like you would webmail. And then you establish the account. And then you basically come up with your own password.
Yeah, that's, um, the town upstairs takes care of that.
Okay, right.
Yours might be as yours and then it's like, you know. Then.
I, I, I got the instructions. Yeah. But again, they, they, they gotta, you need to be provided with. You know, a town email. So had you even tried that yet or no?
I'm in the same boat. And it's mostly because I keep getting asked. I did ask and then they didn't answer and I have to use.
Alright, just. Jonathan, you have a town email, correct?
Yeah, yes, I have a town email. Just haven't logged on to it lately.
Okay, that's fine. And Matt, you actually need one, correct?
Right, so I've gotten in touch with people upstairs.
Matt needs one. Diane?
But you, Diane only needs a password. Diane only needs a password. And Matt, you need a whole new email, a whole email. Is what I have down right here.
Sure.
That's correct? Okay.
Correct.
Does anybody else need it?
Well, all you need to do is. Alright. So they, they gave you an actual email address. So. Well, no, this, it's been a little problematic. And to be honest, if you have to access it as a webmail, it's. You know, a little more remote. I mean, what I've been able to do, if you have like an email program. You can add this. So whenever any emails are sent to you. Then, yeah, I mean, I have. It'll show up.
The problem is I have five emails, so I'm recording that. I'm gonna hand another one over. I just. I'm running out of email.
I, I know that. Well, I mean, you have one email program that you use or?
I have more.
That's not email accounts, but an email program.
You can have mail from any other email port.
Right. Or it, or it's not even forwarded, it's actually just downloaded.
Like in here? If I hit my email.
Well, if you use your mail and you use Yahoo, you use.
Yes. So when I see this button right here?
Yeah.
When I click on it, it's all my emails everywhere.
Alright, but how did you add your email account back? Whatever email it is.
You go into your settings.
Right, but you should be able to add.
Yes.
This account to.
Yes, I, and I will, but what I'm saying is. I have tons of emails that come in here.
Alright.
So I would probably just check it once a day separately and not have it be like a lot.
Alright. That, that's why I don't do email on my phone because I, I get way too many as well. Well, right, but on your desktop, the, the problem is, again. Any official email coming from the town has to come through our town email. Now, I can reach out to the factory, but any thing official, again, that's what the county emails. But hopefully we'll get that, these resolved sooner than later. So as far as. Our annual training requirement. Of which there is, and again, this is. It's actually town law. That, you know. This, you need four hours of training. I think there's even something in our local ordinance that requires the same. But we're still required to have at least four hours of training. Obviously. We would normally have our in-house training session that takes care of it for the year, but this year. Because, you know, issues with gathering, it's not gonna happen. So. What I do. Have, and what I did find. On the Department of State, the local government training. Has different ways that you can. Meet that requirement. And I'm gonna send this out. So the link, and then you could see, and there's. There's. The, the main one is what they call an online interactive. Where basically. Would be presented with, you know, some kind of subject. And then it would. You know, require that you answer questions. I think it's at the end of the course. And that would be kind of your. You know. Means of the exam. Actually, what they do, they ask you question, ask you questions at the beginning. And then they ask you at the end, kind of just to see that, you know, you can. Feel like you actually learned something. Well.
In a pre-knowledge post.
For Fred.
Actually, the thing is, you could. If they're asking you a question, you could stop the course and then you could do research because they also give you all the resources where the information is found.
Okay, but not that I'm just gonna tell you that I had open book.
I know.
Cause I got two out of four. I don't know how I did that.
Now, that's one way of doing it. There's also, there's one online video. When, and this one's on ethical standards for planning and zoning wars. And you can basically just watch it. There's no, you know. Questions or anything. It's similar to the sexual harassment training. They're just hoping that you get the idea of what's going on. That's one of the options. There's also recorded webinars. These things have actually already presented as kind of like a training course. And then they're now YouTube's, but you could watch those and get credit for. You know, some disinformation. And then that way you could also kind of choose the. The subject that you'd be more interested in. I mean, the ones that I highlighted. There's the zoning board of appeals overview, which I think especially if you were a newer member. You know, I think would definitely be beneficial. There's one conducting meetings and hearings, which is also important. For us. And then there's even one on the seeker, you know, if you're so interested. So I'll, I'll send this link out and then. It, like I say, if you look at it, the page is set up. We're on the right side. And I explained this in the email. Of what areas that you could go to to choose these different means of. Training.
And how do we let, wants to know that we've completed that? Send a link that says we completed it or do we have to email?
Well, the interactive ones, apparently you will get something and you can get it like a certificate, right? And that way you could forward it to Melissa. The other thing is, and Dale would send a link, it's the Capital District Regional Planning Commission. They also sponsor, you know, trainings, but I think there's a fee involved. And even if you wanted to do that, you could get it first, but all these that I just mentioned are free. So that. And again. You could, yeah. My, my recommendation is to deal with the ones that have to do with zoning boards. Being looking at this.
Do you want equal before or before?
I, I think. There's, they tell you one might be an hour and a half or two hours. So that, you know, that and maybe one or two others and then you should.
So it's one hour.
Yeah, maybe four hours. Yeah. Yeah, well, that's the other thing. You don't have to do this exclusively.
That's what I did. I read. And I picked two out of four. Failed two out of four. I did. I did, but I didn't learn how, apparently.
Well.
Just keeping it real, people, keeping it real.
I again, I highly recommend the zoning board of appeals overview, because that. You know, that's really the bread and butter of what we're doing here. The others are nice, I don't know which ones you actually studied there, etc.
Zoning, the basic.
Well, that that does help, yeah.
But it's, it is quite lengthy, it's quite intense, so it's not like.
That's the designation of. Of areas for. For how they determine.
It was, that's a little more int- intense, it's a little more.
Yeah.
In-depth than.
Well, we represent everybody in town, we know where I like it.
Yeah, and again, it is important that we do this training, one thing, and I asked Teresa about this, that if, say, we rendered a decision that somebody. You know, had an issue with, and then it was determined that maybe one of the people on the board was not. You know, up to date on their training, whether it would affect that decision, and she said it would not, and it actually says that, and thank God for that. But on the other hand, if you have not met your training requirements, then when you come up for reappointment, then that potentially could be denied if you haven't been able.
How long were you committed for?
I don't know, it doesn't tell you there, when you're. I think it's five years, correct? Yeah.
Two thousand and twenty-seven, I'm kidding. Looks like it.
But, you know, it it kind of moves us to make sure that we're up to snuff on our training, I mean, people depend on us to, you know. Know what we're doing, and it would not make, you know, it look good if we were not interested enough to. Need those training qualifications.
Me, Todd, and Nelson. All come on December thirty-first, twenty-one.
Well, you know.
You're a newbie.
Yeah, and in theory, as, you know, we do this long enough, that in my absence or Pat's absence, then one of you should. You know, I know Jonathan is, is trained enough to be able to conduct the meeting, because, you know, I get hit in the head with a baseball, and I can't do this, then.
What?
I actually, there's a reason I say that, because that actually. There's a guy named Mike Coolman, who was a, he was the first base coach for a minor league team, and he was coaching first base, and he got hit head with a baseball, and he. Basically. You know, expired right there on the field.
See that, don't put that up there.
No, they wrote a book about it, it was, I I just think of it as, you know, how life can be very fleeting, so. Well, not at my age, but in any event, I'm just saying that everybody should be adequately trained so they know what we're doing. Plus, again, I don't know everything, so, you know, there's no reason that I shouldn't be called out if. You know, overlooking something, and that's why we do this as a group, not just individually. All right, anyway, I'm gonna send this information out, so then hopefully you'll be able to use it to meet those training.
To our personal email.
I'll have to do it to personal emails, yes, but anything coming back officially.
Thank you.
Should go to Melissa, and again. Yeah. And if I do email you, there's nothing, well. If they copy you in. That's okay, right? Yeah, because sometimes, you know, we're trying to figure out who's gonna be available for the meeting or not, and you'll tell me, but if she doesn't get. Or then she doesn't know, and again.
You want it to be properly pliable.
That wouldn't hurt, yeah.
I didn't know that. I thought I was just letting you know.
Well, and that's fine.
And I don't want to bog them in these emails, but that's why I don't.
Well, you could do it just to, if I was the one that, yes, and then you can respond it, just copy her in as well.
Okay, good to know.
Because.
So, you know what I mean, so I have to know who's gonna be here, so I can page everything out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, that's, I think the end of my spiel here. It would be nice to have it kind of done by the end of the year.
Melissa said by Thanksgiving. She wants everything done by.
Really?
Turkey Day, yep.
Okay, well.
I mean, it's, you know, it's a standard you want it.
Yeah, I know, right, all right. But anyway, I would definitely pick by the end of the year if you have done, but in case to me, this is the deadline that I can.
Flip my box.
That's fine, we can make that happen. And again, like I say, it is a requirement, and, you know, the least we could do is to, obviously, it's a little more problematic, because.
Yeah.
You know, and these. The webinars are, I don't know. Not the most stimulating thing, but it is something that, you know. Could be relevant to what we're doing, also, this website has other information that might be of interest to you, I mean, I know there's a thing on historical. Preservation, which is something that you might find more in the rest of it, so. So you could do that if you, in lieu of, again, there's other. All right, other than that, do we have anything else, we're not hearing from Mr. Collins?
No.
I'll make the call.
Okay, any, Matt or Jonathan, anything you guys had to add?
No, no, nothing further from me.
Okay. And Matt said she's a newer member, is this kind of making sense to you, what we're doing here?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, good job on the motion. Nice and complete, yeah. All right.
Thanks, least I can do.
I wanna make more for good, Dan.
Uh, Dan.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Pat. Nelson.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Jonathan. And Matt.
Aye.